Okay. The beautiful theme of the election. Thank goodness. Presentations, Danville, Pennsylvania County, Chamber of Commerce Tourism Committee update, Ms. Moran, Executive Director, and Ms. Bowman, Chairman of the Board. Good to have you here.
Thank you. I am Lori Moran with the Danville, Pennsylvania County Chamber of Commerce. Just for history purposes, I grew up, my dad raised chickens, so I find that last conversation quite timely that I get to come up out through that. Typically 25,000, so we did keep them in page. Thank you all for letting us come back and talk a little bit tonight about tourism, and thank you for the proclamation that you issued earlier. In that proclamation was a number of data and statistics about the impact of tourism in the county, and this is just in Pennsylvania County. So in 2015, we had over 642 jobs that they contributed to tourism, and that was with no effort or coordination. Just imagine what we can do with a little bit of effort and a little bit of coordination to really try to take the assets that we already have here and build on them and build on the people who are coming to our community to visit and spend dollars in our hotels, our restaurants, our shops, and at our many attractions that we have. You all were gracious enough a year ago when I came to speak to you all to agree to go into partnership with Danville City Council and the Chamber of Commerce to start a tourism program for the region. It was the first time. We appreciate that support. We appreciate your financial support and also your willingness to put people involved in that advisory committee. Within your packet that you have, there is information about the data. You'll see Danville and the county both on one sheet as far as the economic impact that tourism has, the latest data we're able to get from this state. You'll also see a listing of all of our Tourism Advisory Committee members. I know that we have Larry Aaron with us tonight, who I believe is going to speak a little bit later right after us, talking about the 250th anniversary. And at this time, I'm really proud to introduce the Chairman of our Tourism Advisory Committee, Brenda Bowman.
Thank you, Laura. Good evening. Good to see you all. Brenda Bowman from the Chatham Players District. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank my supervisor for the wonderful job that he's doing and all of you for what they're doing for the county. I'm just going to touch base on a couple of things. As Lori did mention, we have an advisory board that's made up of members from both Danville City and the county, some that you appointed, some the city appointed, and some that the Chamber appointed. And so I want to thank you for putting your trust in me by appointing me to this committee, as well as Diane Anderson from the Upstate River District. And Diane lost her mother yesterday, so I'd like us to remember her in her family prayer. Next, I want you to refer Larry Aaron, who's here tonight. He's also on it too. One of the things that we did, and I know you already are aware of it, it's in your packet, but one of the first things we did was develop the calendar of events. We're really excited about it. People are loving it. We have placed, we have 10,000 copies made, and we have placed them in welcome centers, airports, all along 85, 95, and other North Carolina and Virginia. So we're real thrilled about this, and we're getting a lot of positive comments back about it, to have all the main activities going on in Danville, Pennsylvania County in one place that you can go to. Now, it's not perfect. It doesn't have everything. Obviously, we put this out in January, but with the caveat to others in the community, if you have an event that you'd like to place on our calendar, please let us know. It's on the Chamber's website. And we're also, as Lori mentioned, Miss Moore too, we're in the process of developing our own website, and it's a worthy progress, but we're getting there. Again, if anyone here tonight, and those watching this on YouTube, if you have anything you'd like to have put in the calendar, just contact the Chamber. And we do plan to have a second printing mid-year, and we'll be able to get a lot of the things that were left off in the beginning. And again, if anyone here wants a copy, we're glad to let you have that. One of the things we are also getting ready to embark on is developing our own love sign. We have a subcommittee, and we've already met and put out a press release that just went out last night asking for citizen input as we start developing this love sign. You've seen the love signs all over the state of Virginia, that the Virginia not war, Virginia tourism, what have you, support this, all these love signs in conjunction with our state logo, which is just lovers. So we're asking for citizen input as far as the design, and there are opportunities for sponsorships and labor, if anybody wants to help us when the time comes to assemble, to build and assemble and that kind of thing. So we are excited about that as well. We just recently started a series of stakeholders meetings and have invited the different businesses throughout the county and the city to participate. We divided it into four meetings. The first meeting we had last week was for the access museums and recreation, and it was well-attended, great feedback. The businesses are excited about what we're doing to help them and help promote their businesses, and we ask for feedback, and then what can we do for you? How can we help you as well? And our goal is to not only promote our area, but also when we have tourists, visitors coming from various things, we want to be able to keep them a little longer. How can we keep them a few hours extra to go to a restaurant if they come here for one thing? How can we get them to spend the night? This week, and Lori may be bringing this up too, but our Chair, our staff person that we've hired, Amy Bowles, I think most of you have met her. We're real thrilled to have Amy on board. She's doing a great job. She is at an agro-tourism conference this week, and looking forward to her bringing back some very interesting facts. That is the hot topic evidently these days. We're hearing a lot about it, about tourist farming tours, working farm tours, farming tours. And so we want to be able to have some of those set up where people come to our area, stay at bed breakfast, and go to a farm and see how a farm really works. So we've got three more stakeholders meetings, and the next one is April 27th, and that will have the hotels, motels, bed breakfast at that one. Then we have one on May 1st, and that's for the agro-tourism breweries, venues, farms. And the last one on May 11th will include anybody and everybody that misses some of the others, restaurants, shopping, that type of thing. So if the others are as well received as the first one, I think we hit something. And we're offering the businesses frontline training to their staff and help teach them about our area, so that when visitors do come into a restaurant or hotel and ask, "What's there to do? Where can I go?", we want that frontline staff to be able to tell people how to get to this and where they can go have a particular meal or some live entertainment. So the stakeholders meetings are ongoing, and you are also welcome to attend any of our meetings anytime. We meet the third Monday at 4:00 in the Chamber's office, and all these stakeholders meetings are in the Chamber's office as well. And last Tourism Week, May 7th through 13th, we are having T-shirts made that the committee is going to be wearing out and about at different events to promote Tourism Week. So again, I thank you for this opportunity. I'm loving it, and I appreciate you letting me have fun with Lori and Amy as we move forward on this.
Thank you. Let me just reference in your packet is a copy of a three-year strategic plan. That was one of the deliverables that we promised that we would bring back. Mrs. Bowman's already hit on several of the things that we've already done. We have hired a part-time tourism coordinator, Amy Bowles, who we certainly need her more than part-time because of the work that's being done, so it's our hope she can go full-time July 1st. We have been trying to develop funding sources, and so we received a $25,000 grant from the state, from Virginia Tourism Corporation, to help develop our website. We're also pursuing other grant opportunities right now to help with a lot of our marketing Marketing materials are not inexpensive. We've had the first brochure, and we're looking at others. We're looking at, and again, Mrs. Bowman, I'm not going to repeat what she said, but as you look at over a couple of, the next couple of years, you can see it really is about how do we grow and help the assets that are here first and foremost, and then we start to look at where there are opportunities that we can continue to grow as well. So we're working hard to try to bring together our tourism assets to really, the different entities, to work together to try to figure out how we maximize and serve them better. Because if we can help increase attendance for events, for example, at ODAC on a weekend when they're having an event there, we can bring more people into the community to stay for the weekend, to spend money while they're here, that's revenue into the county, and that's our goal, how to get more people here. So we're working diligently to try to do that. One of the pieces that we're looking at next too will be working to own a dashboard of data to collect. The state, the latest data we could give you is 2015. We want real-time data. We want to track whether or not we're making a difference. Because if we can't change the numbers from what they're already changing, quite frankly, we'll just sit back and let it do what it's doing. But I believe that a little bit of investment will go a long way. This is a critical component, as we look at the economic development growth of the region, and a small investment will have tremendous returns, and we want to document and prove that. So we're going to, we're working with a third party to look at what data we can collect and working with a lot of our attractions that currently don't have it, they don't have a uniform system of collecting data, and some of them don't collect data at all. So how can we help them fit that piece in? So we're excited. We look forward to a continued partnership with you, and if you have any questions, we're more than willing to try to answer those.
Anyone have any questions?
Who's the Chairman? I just have a statement. All I can say is wow. Thank you for the job that you guys are doing. I think that's a dream team. I expect, I would go, I would probably put a wager on this with the county attorney. I think your numbers have probably doubled, and I thank you for the direction you ladies and Aaron are going in. So thank you. Those bread and breakfasts, I love that idea as well as I'm looking for my trail. If you guys can come down and park on my trail that goes all the way to Richmond, we can link them all the way up. If I can get the sheriff down there, he can bring your cars and all, I think we can get going. I would love to see that whole trail. I think we got a tourism right there in Ringo. I would love to see it connected all the way up to bed and breakfast along there, all the way to Richmond. I think that would really be cool. Thank you, Ms. Moran, and the rest of you guys for what you do. I'm behind you any way I can be.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I too will say, you two did a great job. I will mention that one of the little things that my family likes to do when we vacation is we tend to go and look at cathedrals or special chapels that are around, and that's one of our little tricky things. But I was amazed, you know, I've been in Danville, Pennsylvania County area all my life. I went over to Chatham Hall, and I was amazed at the history and chapel we have over there. And they were kind enough to give us a tour. Mr. Black was, and Mr. Smith happened to be with me. And the history that's in that chapel and the pipe organ system and all, it would put it on the radar because it would be a nice spot for folks to visit for tourism. It's just, it's unbelievable how many hidden treasures we have in Pennsylvania County that some of us that have lived here all the time didn't, didn't even aware of. So it'd take our, Mr. Paul.
I just want to congratulate Laura. I've done this for 14 years, and you're one of the most dedicated stakeholders in this county, and we promote the county 100 percent. I thank you for what you do. I've seen it year after year after year, and I've seen things grow and grow. Glad you got an exciting team we have. We're very blessed to have Laura represent us.
Amen.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you from the entire board. I'd like to speak for all of them, and we feel like the money will invest.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate your comments about Chatham Hall and all of the hidden treasures. One of our goals will be to better educate even our own community about what's here. People don't realize the assets we have in this community. So one of our goals will be to educate the people here. And even for those of us who think we know a lot about it, we can learn something every day, and that's just a perfect segue to your next speaker. So we'll see how much all of us knows he prepares to come up. So thank you all again very much.
I promise you, our next speaker is Pennsylvania County 250th Anniversary Activities Update from Larry Aaron, President of Pennsylvania County Historical Society. And I'll tell you, none of us can come close to him on historical stuff with Pennsylvania County. We had the pleasure to be with him in Richmond, and he just amazes us with the knowledge he has.
Thank you. Well, after all the serious discussion about land and buildings and chickens, I'm glad to, and I know this stuff, serious stuff, I want to lighten up, it looks like it's already been lightened up. And I want to say as a member of the Tourism Advisory Committee, working with Laura and Brenda, it's been a real privilege, and what they've said goes right in, just dovetails right into what I want to talk about. Because as you said, Chairman Warren, we do have a lot, and as Ms. Moran mentioned, we have a lot of things in Pennsylvania County to see and do, and a lot of it concerns the past. And one reason I'm here, I've been here before a few months ago, to just sort of get to follow up on about the 250th anniversary. You know, that'll come but once in a while. About every 250 years. And so anyway, I'm coming here tonight to kind of update you a little bit, but I want to, just to make you aware, not only what's going on, but to encourage you to be actively involved and to encourage you to encourage others in your districts to be involved as well. And also to remind us all that we have a great history, and it's not all pretty, but it's our history. And one thing that I would like to say is, I got here because of history. Seven generations of parents and grandparents decided to have children, and I finally got here. So I think that's a good thing for me. But a lot of times, we think about history as something that's just, well, it's nice to know stuff, but what difference does it make anyway about our daily life? Well, I happen to think it makes a lot of difference. If you don't think history matters, think about, think about it each time you try to balance your checkbook. I think history matters a whole lot right there. And then, think about it next time you get in an argument with your spouse, for you gentlemen, that would be your wives, you're probably going to lose the argument. But think about this, when you get in an argument with your spouse, usually everything in the past that you should have done and could have done is going to come up, and somebody's going to lose that argument. And another thing, if you go to jail or you get a job, there's going to be a background check. So history is important, but not just immediate history. I think a past history, a distant history is important too, because, and the reason, I'm not trying to lecture you about this, I've talked about this before, but I'm trying to just throw it in every chance I get, that when we know about our past and the past about the county, and the past about other people in the county, then it helps us not only to understand ourselves, but understand other people and where they're coming from. So one thing I wanted to do tonight is to mention that this 250th anniversary is important because it's a way that we can bring everyone together. You know, we all have different politics, religion, economic, and social backgrounds, but we all share this. We all live here, and it doesn't matter how we got here, we're here now. And so we have to join together to actually, to commemorate and to celebrate the things that we have to, that are, that are here. I remember Tim O'Neill, the Congressman who was Speaker of the House, once said that all politics is local, and all history's local too. When I was this good, I mean, we got names and dates and battles and so on and so forth about stuff everywhere else but here. We didn't get much about here. But, you know, all history's local because all of it happened to somebody, somewhere, and that means our county has a lot of history here. And I think most of you know a lot of that. So I want to just give you an update on some of the things that we're doing or that's going on in the county to commemorate history. First of all, last night, we had a program at the railroad station, the restored railroad station, the Historical Society did, on World War I, because this year is the 100th anniversary of World War I, and a number of men in Pennsylvania County served in that war. Now, coming up on May the 6th, we have an event at the Reed Gallery, Finding Our Roots, which is basically a genealogical fair that's sponsored by another, a number of historical organizations, area libraries, and so forth. And there's going to be an opportunity for people to learn more about the past and learn how to research their ancestors. On May the 17th, well, I want to come back to that, but on May the 20th, there's going to be a Gretna Little Theater, a children's festival with local office, and so there's another event. And June the 1st, now, June the 1st is the big day. June the 1st, 1767, is the day we became Pennsylvania County. And on that day, the resolution that you passed back in December, that Jesse Barstail, one of our supervisors, Barstail, who is also on our board of Historical Society Board, he read that to a fairly large crowd at the Gretna Theater when we had our first program there. And Star Tribune has agreed to print that on that week's paper, so that it will come out on Thursday, June the 1st. And I want to thank you all for that resolution that you made, and for those of you that also went to Richmond for the resolution by the General Assembly. On June the 15th, the Chatham First Organization has a design campaign contest for banners for the lamppost in Chatham, and that's going to be an event at Reed Street Gallery where the windows will be revealed. The big day, another big day, is when we have a birthday party on June the 17th, which is Saturday. Chatham First, in cooperation with the Town of Chatham, sponsoring a couple of things that day. And first of all, in the afternoon, there's going to be a Family Fun Day at Francis Hertz Park. And then in the evening, there's going to be a street party for adults, and there'll be bands and so forth, and they even talking about fireworks, and I don't know how far the fireworks will go, but still, we plan, I've been working with them and others to have a big birthday party that day. Now, July 15th, there's going to be an event at Yech's Tavern, sponsored by the DAR and the Historical Society. We're going to have apple cider and watermelon, and maybe, I think we ought to have a watermelon seed spitting contest. I just think that would be fun. But we're going to have some music. We're going to have a debate between a patriot and a Tory. That's basically me and Bill Black, and I won't tell you who the Tory is, but anyway. We want to make that a fun event. Yech's Tavern is built around 1750. That's old, folks. That's older than the county. And then, in August, on August the 21st, there's going to be a Tobika History Program at the Axe Center, where the Tobika Museum is. And on October the 7th, we have an occult festival, which we hope will be bigger and better this year because of the 250th anniversary. Some of the projects that are going on is, I'm working with the school system, public school system, with a couple of other gentlemen, and we're working on a history of education in Pennsylvania County. Not only public education in public schools today, but all the way back to the Revolution and even in the 1800s, and early black education included, and so forth. So also, we're also, the Historical Society is sponsoring a contest, a competition in the high schools and the elementary schools in the fall. In the high schools, an essay contest, a theme, Pride of Pennsylvania, and also the same theme in a poster contest of elementary schools. As far as that goes, there's already been a history day at one of the schools, and at Hertz Elementary and at Gretna Elementary, there's going to be, in a few days, and May the 13th, there's going to be a day of Happy Birthday, 250th Anniversary for Pennsylvania County Day, and they're going to have a race and a few other activities going on, so that should be interesting as well. Hertz is already, it's already been noted that Hertz is having its 50th anniversary this year, and they're going to be having a few events, and we have other events going on in the fall, but they are not solidified yet. And there's a number of other things going on, and I won't go into all of them. I know you can't remember all the dates, but, you know, the Star Tribune has an article every week about the history of the county, and there are going to be articles about the events that are going on. Our Facebook page for the Historical Society will have an update pretty soon of the events that are going on, and there'll be websites and Facebook pages for organizations. And I hope that you will encourage organizations in your community, whatever it is, a fire department, whatever organization, to plan something for this 250th anniversary. It's going to go on, and we've had events every month ever since January, but it's going to go on to the end of the year. So, you know, I really think that it's important for us to know our history, and I'm an old teacher, so I like to ask questions. And I want to give you a little quiz. I couldn't, I know my time's probably up, and I want to make this really quick, so you don't have to write anything, you don't have to raise your hand, and if you don't know the answer, you don't have to grin so people will know you didn't know the answer and, you know, and all that. But I'm going to just repeat these questions, and then I'm going to go back and answer them, and I got a reason for doing this. And here's the first one. What was Chatham's name before it became Chatham? Now, you don't try to answer it, and this is for the audience as well, it's just, no answers are needed. I'm just going to go through the questions. And a second one is, this is my favorite one, how many stars on the Pennsylvania County flag? And then a third one is, which US president, and there were a number of them that came through the county, but which US president stayed overnight in Pennsylvania County? And the fourth one is, what well-known structure built in Pennsylvania County was built in Pennsylvania County in 1853? And then, another one is, what is the oldest road in the county? And my last one is, what governor of Virginia came from Pennsylvania County? Now, see, you're already thinking about whether you know these or not, but I'm not going to, I didn't come here to, you know, show how smart I am or belittle anybody, anything like that, but I've got a reason. Here it is. I want to give you the answers first. Chatham's name before it became Chatham? Competition. And there's a story about that. If you don't know, it's really interesting. That was imposed upon us by the state legislature because of an argument between a big, a couple of groups of citizens. Secondly, how many stars are on the Pennsylvania County flag? 23. So just so you know. And then thirdly, which US president stayed overnight in Pennsylvania County? George Washington.
I got one right.
All right, here we go. All right, number four, what well-known structure was built in Pennsylvania County in 1853? The courthouse, right there on Main Street, right here. And then, five, what is the oldest road in the county? Hickey's Road, right up on Route 40. And then the last one, what governor of Virginia came from Pennsylvania County? Claus Swanson. Now, whether you knew those or not, the reason I'm asking this is, how can anyone, any of us, and let me just tell you, that was the time I didn't know these answers too. I spent half my life in Danville, or more of it than I can remember, but it's my age. But my question to you is, how can anyone have pride in Pennsylvania County if they don't have a sense of place, of the past and the present, of this place where we live? The more you know, even though it may seem incidental and just, just extra knowledge and may not affect your everyday life, in a way it does because... and may not affect your everyday life, in a way it does because, if you know the history of this county, and you study it, and you try to learn it, and, and some of these activities that we're doing, the articles in the paper, are all designed to help us get in touch with our history. How can anyone have pride in the county if they don't know their history? And so, that's just my question, I want to leave it, I want to thank you for your time, thank you for all you're doing for the county, and I appreciate being here tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm ready for questions, if you have any.
Anybody got any questions? Thank you for being here today, we appreciate it. Okay, we'll move along to unfinished business. We had a motion made by Mr. Barber and second by Mr. Blackstock. We have a 10-day layover for some expenditure refunds. Any discussion on those? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Barstail?
Yes.
New business, item 15, Virginia Rules Camp Grant, and I think we have Deputy Civil on the pair. Give us a shout out on the grant.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mrs. Smith and Mr. Hunt. Stay on, very good. Also, we'd like to acknowledge my boss sitting in the back over here, Sheriff Taylor, and thank you for being here also, Mr. Malcolm. Come to you tonight with a request from the Pennsylvania County Sheriff's Office through the Attorney General's Office, to once again accept the Attorney General's grant for the Virginia Rules Summer Camp. This is a subcommittee that's designed to enrich our youth, to target a demographic in our society that affects every one of your constituents, from Hertz down to Hampton Estates. Okay, we're targeting rising 8th graders in Pennsylvania County. One of the main reasons that we elected to go with that age group was we found that through our efforts as school resource officers, the summer between 7th and 8th grade is the time and the age where we see our kids getting a little more leash from their parents, they're being allowed to adventure out a little bit more often, a little bit further away from, from the holding of the hand. We also know that that's the age that our kids are starting to experiment. Through a lot of surveys and a lot of information, we find that kids are taking their first drink that summer, they're smoking their first cigarette, unfortunately, smoking their first marijuana, unfortunately, experimenting with pills. So, what our goal is, is to educate the kids through a very, very unconventional means of educating them. And that's through the Virginia Rules Camp. You have some information in your packet, I don't want to belabor a whole lot of that, and I don't want to be conducive to your time, but I think a picture says a thousand words. This is our group from last year's camp. The Virginia Rules Camp is sponsored by the Attorney General, hosted by local police It's designed to help us build a positive relationship with the kids. We do that through instructing some of the Virginia Rules modules, which is lesson plans that were specifically designed by the Attorney General's Office. The program dates back to Bob McDonald, who started it as a program called Class Action, where he got with the Director of the Board of Education for Virginia, at the time Dr. Kennedy, and they made curriculum that was SOL compliant for law enforcement officers to go into the schools and talk to the kids about simple things. Liabilities under the law, the criminal law, the juvenile justice system, abstinence from drugs, abstinence from tobacco, abstinence from alcohol, driver's licenses. During the camp, we bring in a variety of things. You see here a canine demonstration, not very many people have seen that. Again, the camp is designed for rising 6th and 9th graders, we're targeting rising 8th. We find that there's a, a big gap between the DAR program that's done at the county level in the 6th grade, and then the high school level, Virginia Rules program that's taught in driver's ed at 10th, and then US government class in 12th. The, the camp is funded by a grant from the Attorney General's Office. We have accepted this grant twice before in history, it is a reimbursable grant, it is a $5,000 grant. So, we're here tonight to petition you to allow us to accept this $5,000 reimbursable grant. We've been very fortunate in this community to have local businesses that have been helping us with a lot of products that the grant will not cover. The grant will not cover food, okay? We've had Katie Foods, which is the owner of Wendy's, Dan Valley Foods locally in the county, and other businesses in the community that have donated foods for us to be able to offset the cost of some of those expenses. The sheriff is graciously using our resource officers from the school system to facilitate the camp and act as counselors during the camp. And we also have a group of older teenagers that are selected by an application process that come out as a kind of big brother, big sister for the younger kids, so we get a little thing there. I don't know if the sound's going to play?
Ashley Wallen and Christina Stulman are high school students, chosen to serve as role models at the camp. While the camp teaches the kids about baseball, teen violence, and drug and alcohol use, there's no shortage of fun and games. Even Attorney General Mark Herring lathered on the action, but in this heat, taking breaks is a must.
We're taking water and keep me hydrated.
It's a mixture, we're going to be going indoors a little bit, outdoors a little bit, we'll do some water sports through the week.
Even though it was the first day, new students aren't letting the heat stop them learning.
We're learning in life how games are fun and stuff, but that was, it was like a code drill test, and it was like, it was like true or false questions.
The hope is, by the end of camp, that test score and their relationship with officers
All right, there's going to be one more video, because I think that these say more than I could ever say, but the one thing that I want to impart on you as we go forward with this, is this camp is designed to teach kids lessons. And we do that, and we really sneak it in a little bit, because we have so many activities that when we sit down and do a pre-test, these kids take a pre-test, and they're happy about doing it. It's not school, but they're learning. So, I just want to show you one more video from the camp.
We played games, we got food, we made our own cupcakes, and made our own burgers and stuff.
Playing sports and activities and stuff like that.
Virginia Rules Camp is about more than fun games, at times it got serious.
We've covered topics such as anti-gang behavior.
Not really true, basically, and stuff that just add like they're nothing.
I didn't know there were gangs in Nashville.
The dynamics of what happens to you in a car crash, alcohol and drug abuse, we talked about the criminal justice system.
One of the major goals, to get young people more comfortable with law enforcement.
When was the last time you seen a cop dressed like this? It's, it's been amazing.
I've never seen a cop with this phone before, I thought they were all like...
The campers say lessons learned at this camp will stay with them for a lifetime.
It builds character and teamwork.
Yes, that's a good idea. I would love to go.
To hear a 12-year-old telling me builds character and teamwork, just kind of, you know what I'm saying. Mr. Barstail had the pleasure of coming down and being with us the first year we were And I'd like to open an invitation for all of you, we will send out, the camp is going to be the week of July 10 through the 14th, if it's so approved, and I'd like to make an invitation for all of you to come down, we'll send a date and a time when things will be at a minimal to not interfere with the activities that are going on. If you're willing to come down and play like Mr. Herring did, we'd love to have you too, because it's a blast. Thank you for your time, any questions?
Anyone have any questions? Thank you very much, it's obviously been great working in camp and getting results, so I appreciate it, and you look much more comfortable in the T-shirt. A board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the board supervisors approve, the sheriff department's request to submit the Virginia Rules Camp program application, authorize the sheriff and/or county administrator to sign all necessary obligations.
Second. Multiple seconds, I'll look at this behavior and motion that had been made by Mr. Blackstock. Mr. Hunt, does this require a roll call?
No, it does not.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Doctor Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
I got Smith on line. VDOT resolution, item 16, Harren Point, section A, B, and C.
I'll take this. This item's on page 89 of your board packet. I'm very excited to finally put this thing to bed. Mr. Seiz, I've been working on this for at least two years. Harren Point is a subdivision that is located in and around Leesville Lake, I believe it's in, Mr. Hagman's, maybe. It is some... They, the original developer went bankrupt, and there were roads that were in a slight disrepair, and VDOT would not take them into the system until some repairs were done to a guardrail, some curb and gutter, some removal of concrete, some riprap work. Utilizing the developer's bond, and the first bank of Alta Vista has been tremendous in working with us, we have gotten these roads up to VDOT standards, that they can be taken into the system and maintained in perpetuity by VDOT. In order to do that, it requires the board to pass the resolution that starts on page 90 and goes through page 95 of the board packet. This doesn't have a number, because this is actually written by Mr. Shelton and Mr. Patrick VDOT. So, the board, if it's their pleasure, and obviously their pleasure, that it really helps out the system of Pennsylvania County, who live in this area, we would need a roll call vote to authorize the chairman, Warren, to execute the resolution on page 90, to begin the process to take Harren Point Road Sections A, B, and C into the VDOT system.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we technically take the roads that Harren Point has listed into VDOT's state system.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, second by Mr. Barber. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Barstail?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. Item 17, request for tipping, need waiver from Oak Grove.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we waive tipping fees for the project that was discussed in the work session earlier in the paper.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, second by Mr. Barstail.
Mr. Barstail?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. Item 18, love sign request, Chatham First.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we support and approve the installation of Virginia Tourism Love Sign in the town of Chatham in front of the Pennsylvania County Courthouse.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, second by Mr. Barber. Any discussion? Mr. Barstail. I'm sorry, Mr. Barstail. Y'all so quick on the roll. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item 19, request to surplus voting poll book permits.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we waive surplus, the, the permits, allow all the localities to purchase the permits to the ease of voting purposes.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
I need to do a roll call. Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Barstail?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. Recommendation from Fire and Rescue Study Subcommittee. Sir.
Yes, sir, there's no report other than the Fire and Rescue Study Subcommittee has been had twice, and putting forward recommendations as they become available.
New business 21, recommendation from Animal Welfare Facilities Committee. Mr. Blackstock, would you like to add anything to your...
Yes, the recommendations from the committee were that the staff will direct staff to work closely with the Lynchburg Humane Society to make sure a facility opens on time and develop a partnership with the Lynchburg Humane Society in the future. And then, the second recommendation was to the staff work closely with Scott Giacapo and network best friends. That deals with animal control offices and working in the field.
Any additional questions for the Animal Control, Animal Welfare Facilities Committee?
We do have one more that we added.
We added an item.
Yeah, the RFP, hold on.
Item 2A.
You handed me so much tonight, let me back down.
I can't get my name right, too.
Item 2A was the discussion to authorize a request for proposals for Pennsylvania County Animal Shelter Lease and Operations Contract.
Motion come from the committee, requires no second. Mr. Hunt, do we need a roll call?
No, but, but I don't think this particular recommendation came from the committee, did the RFP.
It originally got from the committee.
I, I think it'd be better if we had second just in open mind.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, second by Mr. Barber. Any discussion now? Okay, we don't need a roll call, right?
No, sir.
Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand. Item 22, joint use agreement update Pennsylvania County Schools, Pennsylvania County Board Supervisors.
Mr. Warren, I see Mr. Moore back there, he might want to pipe up a more.
Evening. It was a brief amendment, well, a big amendment to the joint use agreement within the school board and the board supervisors. It is a language that acknowledges the parks at the middle schools, and also is a, a language that assigns the names of the parks. So, it's, like I said, it's brief, but it's, it's big. I was with the school board last month, passionately worked with school staff and school administration to get the language correct, and that is what it's pointing to.
Any questions for Mr. Moore? Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the attached agreement, authorize the chairman of Parks and Recreation to sign it on the hat again.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Barber, second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? I'd just like to thank the school board for their party, yes, because it shows again that we're all trying to work together for the greater good of the county, and thank you, Mr. Moore, for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. It does not require a roll call vote, does it? Okay. Any minutes?
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Barstail?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. 23, expenditure refunds for March 2017. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appropriate, we appropriate $40,811, five cent is listed on page 21.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, second by Mr. Hagerman. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Barstail?
Yes.
And Mr. Warren?
Yes. Okay, we're down to item 24, change... Okay, we're down to item twenty-four, change order two and three, animal shelter.
Mr. Warren, we had Mr. Hawker here. I think he'd be good to pick him up.
Mr. Chairman, board members, I know you've got it in your packet, so if you've got questions on it. Basically, what happened is, hold on, that twelve thousand, roughly twelve thousand square feet at the rear of the existing facility that we are not renovating, that's not a part of the animal shelter, is for future expansion. When we took the woodwork item around the eaves and all, it was completely rotten. And once we got into the actual roof membranes, it would, we even had some decking that was bad. The metal decking had to be replaced. So we got eleven thousand nine hundred ninety dollars for that particular change order. That work has already been done. The main reason is that we had to move forward because we cut it after water once we started tiring the roof off, getting damaged the facility. So, and then the next change order is we found some unsuitable soil on both sides of the building that would not hold up to what was in the contract, the actual pavement, the paved area of the new parking lot. Started at around a hundred thirty thousand dollars for the sick, for the complete change as the drawings was. I actually negotiated it back, took some of the pavement out, took some of the undercutting out, and concentrated on the actual parking area in front of the building as well as what I consider the actual new shelter. Because you've got room in the basket to expand. I was able to reduce to a hundred thirty thousand, about forty-six thousand four seven, four forty-seven fifty, for a total amount, and the change order two and three, fifty-eight thousand four hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. What we're looking for tonight is an actual thirty thousand dollar appropriation from unappropriated funds. I'm not asking for the whole fifty-eight thousand. I'm trying to balance this. We get real close to finishing the project. I'm trying to balance it out with things that we've got in the contract that we can balance it out with, things that we did have to do so I can keep it as low as we can and as close to budget as we can. But what I am asking for tonight is real consideration of approval of fifty-eight thousand four thirty-seven, four thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents for unappropriated funds and to approve change order two and three on the new animal shelter and authorize the county administrator to execute the change order.
I'll ask any questions?
Motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve change order, that we approve change order two and three in the total amount of fifty-eight thousand four hundred thirty-seven and fifty cents and appropriate thirty thousand from unappropriated funds, funds to the construction fund of the shelter and authorize the county administrator to execute both change orders.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Barber, second by Mr. Blackstock. Any discussion?
Mr. Hager, soil. We didn't do any boards, anything, or that just popped up?
It was a couple of boards done, but not up close to the building. This was really up close to the building, going water. See, it had seeped down through, and when we actually put the machinery out, we cut the old thing off and they got to run the heavy machines, you could see it pumping. So we knew then that it would not support. But we all put an undercut in it, so if we decide in a future expansion or y'all, somebody decides that the undercut will already be removed and you'll have a base, it's just a payment somebody would have to pay for later. I'm trying to keep the cost down for what we're doing now.
Mr. Hawker? Did we discuss this about the ground maybe a year and a half ago, two years ago, something like that? I'm trying to remember. For some reason...
We had some sites that we had to evaluate, but some of that was in the environmental assessment. They didn't want to do the boards for the actual road. Because in order to do it, they would have to board through the existing road. But once the equipment got it, and there's been a lot of equipment running on that site since Black Construction's run, they give it up. And the front part, we'll support it, trucks, like transfer trucks or whatever, but the sides where it was in the contract would not, so I cut a lot of them out because that can be done in the future there.
Right. I remember, I was discussing, but I got remembered exactly what it was. Anyway, thank you.
Mr. Hawker, I had the same question Mr. Blackstock had, but I think we need to reflect that this is not necessarily an environmental issue. This is a public issue. It's for that, just for the public.
All the environmental studies that was done, or it came back clean, everything was clean. This is geotechnical because of the way distribution of traffic and weight load.
I just thought that would interest him for the public.
That's fair. No environmental issue.
Right. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. We need a roll call? Mr. Flipp?
Mr. Barxtown?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hagman?
Yes.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. Item twenty-five, change order two, courthouse security project. Mr. Barber?
Mr. Chairman, as we do at the courthouse security, I'm sure we all will know the way we have to come in now. We hope to change that soon, if we're willing, maybe within the next couple of weeks. But at any rate, in the treasurer's office, everybody's familiar with where the new equipment lot's going to be set. Mr. Shaw's office is a very, very small office. You almost have to go outside and change your mind anyway. But because of this renovation we're doing to it and the decimal sounds of noise, we completely closed the window up. So we put it really in a closet and then break the window open. And even with that, the construction going on and you sitting in that is still disruptive to try to conduct this. So what I've done is I looked at, and I wanted to look at two enhancements on it, and I did talk to the sheriff, he may be a left now. The county state, I'm not going to get into a whole lot of details, but it's setting out. But this change order will do is it will develop a specific small room that's designed just for the safety to be in and the operation of the county state, which is an enhancement to the security. It will relocate Mr. Shaw's office to the other side of his complex and an office that's not real big, but considerably bigger than what he's got with a window. And it'll be away from the noise that's going to be generated when everybody has to go through security coming through this new way. So sheriff says that he thinks that would be a great fit, but I'm asking for tonight is your consideration improvement of change order for Daniel's construction for eleven thousand three hundred fifty-six dollars. I don't really need an appropriation because its funds already available in the courthouse security, but I do, I am asking for you to consider approval of the change order and let the county administrator have the county administrator the authority to execute the change order number two.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve change order number two and allow the county administrator to execute said change order.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, second by Mr. Barber. Any questions? Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Barxtown?
Yes.
And Mr. Warren?
Yes. Item twenty-six, resolution D back position for Chatham Armory.
I'll take this. This issue's come back like bad penny, boss. In February, if you recall, you approved the resolution and a D which transferred ownership of the recently decommissioned Chatham Armory from the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Military Affairs to the county for one dollar. And at that time, it had no restrictions over related to public use. In March, on March first, two thousand seventeen, Hugh Hummer, senior transaction manager for Division Real Estate Services for the Commonwealth of Virginia, notified me and said that they had made a mistake in the deed that they gave us and they forgot to attach language because this armory was one of the armories that was used as collateral to borrow tax exempt bonds to do general maintenance throughout the state. And so they have asked us to adopt a new resolution, this on page one twenty-eight, and a new deed, authorize execution of a new deed on page one thirty. And the only changes this has is that the Commonwealth seeks a right of first refusal if we ever don't use this building for the public good. And we also, we just have to offer it to them, they don't have to accept it. But we also, so as not to make these tax exempt bonds that they just realized they had taxable, then we have to use that building for at least a public purpose until January first, two thousand thirty-four. And if we fail to do so, we would jeopardize and possibly trigger the aforementioned maintenance bonds becoming taxable. So if the board desires to own that building for one dollar, staff is requesting that it pass the resolution two thousand seventeen dash oh four dash oh one, which is located on page one twenty-eight, one twenty-nine of your packet, a roll call vote. And in the same motion, possibly were separate, to authorize the county administrator to, authorize the execution of the deed transferring said ownership of the decommissioned Chatham Armory from the Virginia Department of Military Affairs to the county for one dollar, which is on page one thirty, with those two restrictions in it. You have any questions, I'll have to answer. If not, we just need those two questions.
Board's pleasure.
I got a question. Sounds like that property's tied up for seventeen more years. What if we decided, because of the location of that property, to turn the building down? We want to build, we're up on down lay, any kind of county building or complex.
I had teleconference with them and that, the portion of the maintenance bonds that are associated with that building, and don't quote them as I can get this information from, is approximately a hundred forty thousand dollars. And if we cease to use it for a public purpose before two thousand thirty-four, the way we could get out of it would be to refund the hundred forty thousand dollars. If you want to give me a firm number, we have to table this and I can get you another report back, but those were the two conditions, the right of first refusal and we have to use it for a public purpose for seventeen more years.
Is there any reason we need to rush this? I think at nine thirty and...
No, there's not. This was their mistake, not ours, and so I think it'd be, they'd be okay with a one month delay. If the board wants me to, so the question you want to know is...
We need to know how tight that property is.
Okay. All right, so I will get information...
With how to do it, with full, why you say that?
I will get information about these scenarios and I will bring it back to the board. And then if it's board pleasure, the best thing we do would just be to postpone this to the next meeting and I'll have a report back and inform the board about it and they can make a better decision.
We need to make a motion to table this.
Well, I think, just for the real players, the only commitment, and I'm good with wait too, because I'd like to have a number, but the only thing we're saying, if we take ownership, we got it, we own it. The only way we don't own it is if we decided we were going to sell it and we got to ask them first.
Right.
So, and that's a declining balance. And I understand their dilemma because they issued these bonds and got tax favorable treatment on them, so if it went away, sold, if they have sold it to somebody else other than us for a dollar for public use, then those bonds will no longer have the tax status. They can, even some renter laws could occur, so.
I've got a good relationship with this guy. I'll get the scenarios, get it in writing, and then provide that information to you to make a better decision.
I know it's been a lot of interest in this building, so you're pretty well telling us it's got to be a county run function.
It has to be a public purpose.
What I'm saying is, you know, a lot of interest expressed. We had got the bill, they wanted to buy it, so that's pretty well available at this point, right? We got to offer.
Unless, my belief is unless we pay them out, that we have to use it for a public purpose.
Solves that problem.
And I will say, and Mr. Hawker's not here anymore, we have been maintaining this building , I think, since like the late fifties or something.
Yeah, ever since.
So just put it to a county, county use.
I will get you this information and let you make, I think it will come clear after we get this information.
For Mr. Sumfado, what he sees of public, perhaps is could qualify, but he adds all of those who are interested too.
Yeah.
They take, when out of existence, then they're responsible for the payback.
Well, they're going to be part of the deed that transferred the end if you sold it.
Do you mind?
If we sold it for more than the hundred forty thousand dollars, as they were mentioning, here we go.
Well, the issue is if you were to commit this tonight, you would always have to offer it to them first before you made any decision. So if you offered to them first and they said no, it was before the two thousand thirty-four, whatever that balance is at that time, and Mr. Warren is correct, that hundred forty thousand is going to step down, we would have to come up with that series.
It's a nice gymnasium, Mr. Moore. I'd like to incorporate in this.
Well, they use it for practice, I think.
They put basketball in there.
They, Mr. Hager, part of this, when we investigate it, it would be nice if, because I didn't see it in here, that the first right of refuse terminates in January the first of two thousand thirty-four.
I agree. I've talked about that too.
I agree, that would be... Once that expires, we don't want any allocation. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And you got, Mr. Davis?
Let me just ask, what was it that made that requirement for us to put it at the public, you know? Why, I knew this come out of, you know, they didn't have it in there. I understand that was, but what is it that drives it, causes these bonds, you're saying that it has to be, okay, okay, that's all they need to come up with?
Very similar to why we can't make big profits subleasing our E nine one towers until we pay off the taxes involved. We're able to borrow money and pay no taxes on any of the interest because we're a locality. And if we start using these for profit purposes, it would defeat the purpose of having tax exemption and we create, make them taxable and have a huge bill on our hands.
So we just don't take any action.
Yeah, I just need a motion to table this and I'll bring you back all this information for the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we table the issues.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion on those motions? All in favor of table, raise right hand. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Doc permitting process.
We skipped twenty-eight, which is courthouse maintenance.
Well, that's twenty-seven.
I'm sorry, I was jamming. You're right. Doc permitting. We discussed this at length at the work session. If the board desires to change its local permitting procedure and no longer require AEP preapproval before issuing a local building permit for docks on Leesville and Smithbound Lakes, we'd ask the board to adopt resolution two thousand seventeen dash oh four dash oh two, which is on page one thirty-eight, one thirty-nine of your board packet.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt Pittsman County Board Supervisors Resolution two thousand seventeen dash zero four dash zero two, clearing up the matter concerning requiring citizens to have an AEP permit before county permit at Leesville and Smithbound Lakes.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, second by Mr. Barber. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call, Mr. Flipp?
Mr. Barxtown?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hagman?
Yes.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I know some citizens are here concerned as well. We discussed this in depth at our work session this afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock. Courthouse maintenance fee, Mr. Hager?
Yes. We again discussed this at length at the work session. Staff is requesting the board authorize staff to commence the legal process to collect the increased courthouse maintenance fee and seek authorization, submit the application to have our courthouse inspected for compliance by the Department of General Services.
Board's pleasure. Some move?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Barber, second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion on courthouse maintenance fee changes? Just trying to, we need a roll call?
No, sir.
All in favor, raise right hand. All in favor raise your right hand. We don't have anything on twenty-nine at this point. Item thirty, West Point Planning District Citizen Pointe.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, we have a citizen pointe resign from their appointment to the West Pima Planning District Commission, and we're being asked this evening to nominate a replacement for the four-year term.
Have anybody had, anybody that's vetted that the various law will pay back on your job? Well, she, we have.
I had to, I had a little resignation.
We have a resignation, Mr. Barber. Okay, well, Mr. Smith, if you'll put it back on the agenda for next month, and I will request the board to seek some interest if there's any available position. Notice of upcoming appointments, Mr. Sherman?
Yes, sir, we have provided this information, a list of upcoming terms and available seats for various boards and missions, as well as a roster of those that have appointments currently for the information. So this is provided in advance, so that you can think about some of these pending appointment slots.
Thank you, that was your information, I have another action.
We do have a T act that we all.
Yeah, I've got that, yes. There was an add-on item, item one A to the, in addition to the agenda, from the Tri-Lakes Administrative Commission, appointments are for a one-year term beginning February first, two thousand seventeen through January third, first, two thousand eighteen. And we had.
The Leesville Lake Association nominated Mr. Sherwood Zimmert to that position.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Sherwood Zimmert to the Leesville Lake, as a Leesville Lake representative on T act.
Thank you. Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, second by Mr. Hagman, any discussion?
I think probably the motion needs to include the dates, is that correct, Mr. Hudd?
Yes, that's always helpful.
Again, February first, two thousand seventeen through January thirty-first, two thousand eighteen.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. We're going to three days of last. Okay, order announcements, so we will start with Mr. Markstead.
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Mr. Scares?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Blackstock?
Nothing.
Hagman?
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I have is some of what I was saying during our work session. I was going to find out, Mr. Jackson, I pledge your power that the Flare Street boat dock was open and ready to use. Hopefully, their district personnel can get in there for us.
Mr. Barber?
I was just going to say, if any board members have been down at Berry Hill or Yoderaba, it's changing, they're clearing the domes, by the way, it looks good.
Thank you. I would like to take an opportunity to thank the Animal Welfare Committee, Mr. Blackstock, Mr. Scares, and Mr. Hagman for a great job they've done to this point and are doing on the facility. And also the staff, they've all been hard at work, and, you know, I think it's just going to be something for the entire county to be proud of. Also, I'd like to mention that the sixty-ninth Pennsylvania Casual Junior Livestock Show in Salem will take place on April twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. And it's a great event for our young folks to be involved in, and it's all day on the twenty-eighth and most of the day on the twenty-ninth. So if you have time, stop out and take a visit and support those young folks. Thank you very much. A report from county administrator.
Nothing, thank you.
And the attorney?
Nothing.
Mr. Blackstock? Last, last line, one is Jake's.
Chairman, I make a motion that we enter into closed session to discuss and consideration or interviews with prospective candidates for employment, assignment, employment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific public offices, appointees, or employees of any public body or authority. Two point two dash three seven one one, A one of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty is amended, setting back county administrators for purpose discussion with elements of county administration.
Second. Motion made, second, and roll call?
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Barkstown?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
These are you certified that during closed session, only items exempted from the Virginia Freedom Information Act for which you went into closed session were discussed. If anybody believed that there was a departure for the reason of going awfully exempted closed session, please those state now and be entered into the minutes. I will now do a roll call. Mr. Mark?
Yes.
Mr. Hagman?
Yes.
Mr. Barkstown?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
And Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Having completed all items on the agenda, chair and the players and board adjourned.